1 2 3 4 5 6 7 8 9 10 11 12 13 14 15 16 17 18 19 20 21 22 23 24 25 26 27 28 29 30 31 32 33 34 35 36 37 38 39 40 41 42 43 44 45 46 47 48 49 50 51 52 53 54 55 56 57 58 59 60 61 62 63 64 65 66 67 68 69 70 71 72 73 74 75 76 77 78 79 80 81 82 83 84 85 86 87 88 89 90 91 92 93 94 95 96 97 98 99 100 101 102 103 104 105 106 107 108 109 110 111 112 113 114 115 116 117 118 119 120 121 122 123 124 125 126 127 128 129 130 131 132 133 134 135 136 137 138 139 140 141 142 143 144 145 146 147 148 149 150 151 152 153 154 155 156 157 158 159 160 161 162 163 164 165 166 167 168 169 170 171 172 173 174 175 176 177 179 180 181 182 183 184 185 186 187 188 189 190 191 192 193 194 195 196 197 198 199 200 201 202 203 204 205 206 207 208 209 210 211 212 213 214 215 216 217 218 219 220 221 222 223 224 225 226 227 228 229 230 231 232 233 234 235 236 237 238 239 240 241 242 243 244 245 246 247 248 249 250 251 252 253 254 255 256 257 258 259 260 261 262 263 264 265 266 267 268 269 270 271 272 273 274 275 276 277 278 279 280 281 282 283 284 285 286 287 288 289 290 291 292 293 294 295 296 297 298 299 300 301 302 303 304 305 306 307 308 309 310 311 312 313 314 315 316 317 318 319 320 321 322 323 324 325 326 327 328 329 330 331 332 333 334 335 336 337 338 339 340 341 342 343 344 345 346 347 348 349 350 351 352 353 354 355 357 358 359 360 361 362 363 364 365 366 367 368 369 370 371 372 373 374 375 376 377 378 379 380 381 382 383 384 385 386 387 388 389 390 391 392 393 394 395 396 397 398 399 400 401 402 403 404 405 406 407 408 409 410 411 412 413 414 415 416 417 418 419 420 421 422 423 424 425 426 427 428 429 430 431 432 433 434 435 436 437 438 439 440 441 442 443 444 445 446 447 448 449 450 451 452 453 454 455 456 457 458 459 460 461 462 463 464 465 466 467 468 469 470 471 472 473 474 475 476 477 478 479 480 481 482 483 484 485 486 487 488 489 490 491 492 493 494 495 496 497 498 499 500 501 502 503 504 505 506 507 508 509 510 511 512 513 514 515 516 517 518 519 520 521 522 523 524 525 526 527 528 529 530 531 532 533 534 535 536 537 538 539 540 541 542 543 544 545 546 547 548 549 550 551 552 553 554 555 556 557 558 559 560 561 562 563 564 565 566 567 568 569 570 571 572 573 574 575 576 577 578 579 580 581 582 583 584 585 586 587 588 589 590 591 592 593 594 595 596 597 598 599 600 601 602 603 604 605 606 607 608 609 610 611 612 613 614 615 616 617 618 619 620 621 622 623 624 625 626 627 628 629 630 631 632 633 634 635 636 637 638 639 640 641 642 643 644 645 646 647 648 649 650 651 652 653 654 655 656 657 658 659 660 661 662 663 664 665 666 667 668 669 670 671 672 673 674 675 676 677 678 679 680 681 682 683 684 685 686 687 688 689 690 691 692 693 694 695 696 697 698 699 700 701 702 703 704 705 706 707 708 709 710 711 712 713 714 715 716 717 718 719 720 721 722 723 724 725 726 727 728 729 730 731 732 733 734 735 736 737 738 739 740 741 742 743 744 745 746 747 748 749 750 751 752 753 754 755 756 757 758 759 760 761 762 763 764 765 766 767 768 769 770 771 772 773 774 775 776 777 778
I don't like the football one.
We met the woman who did it, they did the unveiling. Her mother. You know Dave Bragg's house?
Oh my God, we're on.
The one next to the yellow building on School Street?
Good evening. It being honor about 7:00 PM, the Foxborough Planning Board meeting will come to order. And just so everyone knows, this meeting is being recorded and may be open to Zoom as well. Okay, first thing, planners report?
I apologize, I don't have a written report.
It's okay.
I had a meeting today with Terry Lawton from Oakdale Farms. And they are going to be filing for a site plan review. They have, they're going to be constructing new buildings. They have buildings that are in disrepair. And so they're getting ready to file for a site plan review for that. It's, I saw the architectural renderings and it looks really nice. So it's gonna, they're gonna do a good job.
Where's this again?
On North Street, Lawn Farm.
Yeah, she, I think she took it over from her father.
Yeah. Yeah. So she said that the farm stand, the building with the farm stand is very, very old. And it's in much better shape than the buildings that were built that were newer. The wood was, you know, was better quality apparently. So it's the newer buildings that are being torn down and replaced.
She just redid her parking lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that was one of the things that we talked about is consulting with Scott Shippey, which I, you know, I know that they have, but to make sure that they do have the amount of parking that is necessary for what they're planning to do. So that's where, that's where that stands. Another thing is that we've set up a meeting for next week for the people that bought the buildings on 3137 South Street. And showing us what they intend to do, I guess, with the empty lot. And then the duplex that they intend to tear down. So when I have more information, I will share it with you, with everybody.
Anything on that, that house on 140 that I've reached out to Scott Shippey on, I believe other members of the board have, that has like 10 broken down cars and?
I don't have information about it. I know that the Board of Health and Scott have been working with several properties that have issues. I'm not sure if that's one of them, but.
I would think it would have fallen under the category we just passed the town meeting.
It exactly does.
There's shipping containers in the front yard, cars.
I will find out some more.
Thanks.
Separated by a lot in the middle. The shipping container is a separate one. That's closer down to.
It's by me.
It's 180.
Right by the corner of Van Dorn and 140.
Yeah, on the, facing it on the right side.
Yeah, facing Van Dorn, it's on the right.
Yeah.
That helps right in the corner.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, I will, let me write that down.
Thanks, Gabby.
So we have some minutes to approve.
That was active subdivisions, I think, wasn't it?
Paige would like to add, Scott has sent a warning letter and they have an amount of time to address. They have to follow the process so it stands up in court.
For which?
140?
140.
Have we received a response?
What number, Main Street?
So it's still in the works.
No, that's gotta be the 180.
It's 180.
Okay.
Okay. There you go, Gabby, cross it off the list.
Thanks, Paige.
Active subdivisions?
I don't have any.
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from June 8.
Second. Any comments or anything else on the June 8 minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Do we have to roll call since Tom is on Zoom?
Tom can't vote tonight, right?
They're right, he cannot vote.
He can vote on this.
Oh yeah, he's not.
He's not sworn in, sorry, Tom. Sorry, Tom. He looks upset.
Yeah, he does. We have a request for release of a performance guarantee at 29 Wall Street.
So we have received a letter from Stefan Frey. All the, all the conditions have been met. The last thing that needed to be done was submission of the ASBIL plans and they have been. So I would recommend that the, that the board release all funds being held as performance guarantee. He submitted a $50,000 bond, but there's some interest. So if you could please vote to release all the funds.
Not until he tells us what meat market's going in there. If it's ever, and the attorney too.
Do we want to discuss, are we good? Okay, make a motion to release all funds related to the performance guarantee for 29 Wall Street?
Second.
Who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm a little upset Stefan didn't come.
Thank you. He was, he was busy. Yeah, he apologized.
He's on Antucket, he's busy.
I mean, after a shaky start, an exceptional project.
Yes. Yes. It took, it took a long time to get it off the ground, but it's, yeah.
It looks really good.
Yeah.
It did a great job.
Yeah.
So this reappoint Tom Murphy, is this, are we on our own on this now at this point? Or are we still have to do a thing with the?
No.
It's a memo from Christina about the Select Board and Planning Board have to reappoint Tom Murphy, assuming he is still willing to serve as the alternate Planning Board member. It's just a reappointment, so we don't need to have a joint meeting, just a vote from both boards. The Select Board, this was older, so planning to do this at their June 20 meeting, so I'm assuming they did.
Okay.
They asked the Planning Board to do the same at their next meeting. Once that is done, I can send his appointment letter and he can be sworn in and make it official.
Okay. I make a motion to reappoint Tom Murphy as an associate member of the Planning Board.
Second. You good with that, Tom?
Yes, I am.
Very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Signing up. Anything else we can yak about because it's not 7:15 for a public hearing?
Okay. Is Paige like listening to us, is that how she texted you?
Yes.
I'm assuming, yeah.
After we miss you. But she watches every meeting of everything.
Did she do that before?
Yes.
Paige, we gotta talk about what you do. Three time, need a life there, my friend. Love you.
Whoa.
I said, love you.
Following in the footsteps of Leah Gibson, she watches everything.
She does?
Yeah, but has anybody called Leah out on the Zoom meeting that's publicly broadcasting?
No idea.
You just did.
No, I didn't, I asked a question.
Paige just sent me a message, I'm watching you.
There you go. Oh, we know mommy.
So while we're killing time, I need to check your schedules, make sure that you guys are available, that everybody's gonna be available for the August meeting. We have a meeting scheduled for two weeks, I'm not sure. Bill, is your client for 7 Perry Road, can, do they need to have, do we need to have a public hearing for, in two weeks, or can they wait for August? So right now, we only have one, one hearing for, for the, the meeting in July 27th. So, but I wanted to make sure that people are available for the meeting in August.
August 10.
August 10th.
10 I will be. I will be.
Can you check with Diane?
Well, I don't, I didn't bring my phone, otherwise I'd look at my calendar.
Yeah. Yeah, if you can just let me know tomorrow.
I might be, yeah, I might be heading to the Cape early, so.
Yeah. Okay.
August 10th.
Yeah. Are you available, Bill?
Yep.
Thank you. Tracy, are you available? When?
August 10th.
August 10th.
I don't know.
I have tickets to the Red Sox game.
Okay.
Do I need to be here?
They're gonna lose anyways.
It's a site plan.
It's a site plan, so when, what does that mean? Do you need me?
We, we don't need four affirmative votes for this, we can just, we have, with three it's enough.
I usually don't go to games, but a friend's coming in from out of town.
Tom, are you available on August 10th?
Don't look so happy.
You could have just said I'm going to the game with Tracy.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Paige, you're mentioned in the paper. Again.
So did everybody have a, have a chance to look at the subdivision regulations before the meeting?
frightening. Very much so.
Very well done. This is, this is a multi-year project. Bill and I started it a long time ago, pre-pandemic. And then Lance.
That bill?
No, this bill. And then Lance was, came on board and, and he started running with it. So it's, it's been, and Chris Gallagher's also given us input, so it's, it's been a collaborative effort.
Well, you can tell it's somewhere, huh?
Why?
Because we're just sitting there. The only people who are here are people who need to be. There'll be crowds, like.
Four minutes.
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
Time for 7:11.
So does mine.
Mine's at 7:13.
I got 12.
Gary?
I like Diana's.
Those androids.
I'm 12, too.
You use those two terms connected? No, no, no. No, Mike's barely able to. You heard how we pulled that meeting off at the last minute Monday night? Didn't you? You hear how we pulled that meeting off at the last minute Monday?
Well, he's, so I get this, I tell you it's on, but I didn't tell the chief. I was like, yeah, you're family. So he's like, I really need you to call in on some. And I'm like, Mike, I'm in labor, he's attached to an ID, he's like, oh my God, I didn't realize what it was.
But then I got all the Mike brothers. Martin's ready to get in the car, we're ready to show.
No, suddenly?
As long as way down here, shit, Martin, get out of the car. Quarter past five.
Didn't take long.
No, I wasn't going to.
Do we know when the Fox Cafe is gonna open?
No, since Chris kept it a secret that he was closing.
I know. I was in the, well, my, my ex-husband.
Paige knows. Paige briefed the other day.
Paige, do you know when it's opening?
Fox Cafe?
Fox Cafe.
You should give him your Fox.
Oh, I'll just give it to him. Here, have this.
Okay, what do you say, Diana?
We should play like Jeopardy as an entertainment thing.
We're entertaining Bill right now.
I have to, Paige says a couple of weeks.
Awesome, thank you. It's now 7:15, go ahead.
Okay, it being honor about 7:15 PM for public hearing. Special permit, 127 Washington Street to expand the existing 4,000 square foot fitness studio with a one-story 3,200 square foot addition to the rear of the existing property submitted by RAC Properties LLC. Mr. Buckley, whenever you're ready.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Buckley from Baker &amp; Group. And I'm here representing my client, RAC Properties LLC, who's the owner of the property, as well as CrossFit Tork, who is the tenant, actually. And CrossFit Tork is the business that's owned by the owner of Chase Lumber, Don Chase, his daughter Amanda, and she's run it since 2013. And she's been a very successful business. And now what she would like to do is expand it. And I'm gonna put up here, share my screen, which is the rendering that you've already, you have in front of you. And so what we're, what we're looking at here is, this piece of property is, I think everybody knows it's on the, it's on the corner of Washington Street and Main Street, directly across from the Dunkin' Donuts. As I stated, it was built in 2013, it was a 4,000 square foot building. It's all on the same lot as the Chase Lumber building, so it's one parcel of land, two addresses, though. So the existing 4,000 square foot building, as you can see, is kinda hatched, is colored in red. And the proposed 3,200 square foot addition is in the light brown in the rear. And I just want to point out right now is, subsequent to us preparing the site plan, the architect shifted the building 10 feet left. So there's a 10-foot jog in the back of there, which I'll show you in a moment. It doesn't change anything, the square footage of the addition stays the same, but they didn't wanna, as you look at the existing building from the street, there's, I think it's the water or something that goes in that back right corner, that they didn't want to have to mess with. So they just slid the addition down again, which I'll show you in a moment. So the, as I said, it's currently, the Chase Lumber building is on there, and that building has a, have building supplies and a retail store, and it has several accessory structures on it. So no expansion or alteration is proposed to that, we're simply talking about the existing fitness studio. So this is the design, exact same design that actually I came in, I think in April, to discuss with the board, and specifically I wanted to talk about parking. So the parking in Foxborough, there really is no parking for this type of use. So what I used is Table 6.1, which is the parking requirement, we used the wellness center criteria, which is what was put in when the YMCA use was created. Well, the fitness center is not the YMCA, it's not a wellness center, it's not an operation, 18 hours a day, continuous operation. A fitness studio is more like a, you know, an office, where people come in, they go out, there's classes, mostly in the morning, some in the afternoon, there were some specific classes, or some specific questions on the classes that were asked by the board that I actually put in my cover letter. They don't run competitions, they don't plan on running competitions, they don't anticipate an increase in the number of persons using the facility at any one time. They have limited staff, and they have a limited number of people that, you know, it's not like you go in there and there's 30 or 40 people in the class, there's two or three instructors, and maybe a dozen people from what I've seen and from what I've done. So the parking that's currently there is more than adequate for their use based on 10 years of experience. The parking and zoning requirement for the both facilities requires a total of, I think it's 79 or 80 spaces. A total of 79 spaces, so a wellness center requires 41, the retail portion of the Chase Lumber requires 32, and the storage, and shipping requires six. So what we're proposing is that there's a total. there's a total of 45 paved striped spaces now in the front of the building, located in front of Chase, in front of Chase Lumber, and in front of the existing studio, and there's a few on the side here. So what we're proposing, in order to bring it up to a total of, um, 40, 49, I'm sorry, 59 paved spaces, what we're proposing is to stripe 14 spaces in the back here, and that would be used by his employees if necessary. But, um, and so that would...
When you say his, I mean Chase Building?
Chase Building, yes. So we're talking about a total of 59, why is that an important number? We're requesting a special permit under the section of the bylaw that allows the planning board to allow up to 25% less paved striped parking on a lot. And that's what we're proposing here. But we, you also have to set aside a certain amount of space that's not being built on, in case it ever has to be built on. So that portion is located in here, in kinda this brownish color. We, this is a gr, this is a gravel area that's currently being used now, actually, for parking, but also for, um, display of things like sheds, stuff like that. So he could turn that into paved parking, so... But that, in my opinion, meets the criteria of the bylaw. We've showed the 75% of parking, excuse me, and we've shown we can build the additional 21 spaces, which would increase the number of spaces to 80, which is more than the 79 required.
Bill, one, what is the brown right next to the two pink buildings, there's wording, what's that?
Um, that is, what he's proposing is to have an, what she's proposing is exterior stone, um, workout area. So what they do sometimes is they go out in the grass or on the pavement and do workouts out there in the nice weather. So she'll be doing that, that'll be a stone dust area where they'll do that type of work.
Bill, what is that jog in the future parking area, is that currently paved?
What?
Are we talking about right here?
Nope, down there, yeah.
Down here?
Gray area, yeah.
Yes.
Currently paved.
Yeah, I don't know why. Might've been a structure there sometime. But, um, so that, so that, as far as that's concerned, is that the, that's the parking ask, as far as a special permit. The site is also in the Water Resources Protection Overland District, excuse me, Zone 3 to the Route 1 well. And so what that requires is, is more than 15% of the spa, the part, more than 15% of the lot. If more than 15% of the lot is impervious, it requires a special permit. So in this particular case, the lot is well over 15%. It's 40% impervious. This additional work will make it 41% impervious. So it requires, um, a special permit. In order to mitigate the rendering of more than 15% impervious, what we're doing is we're taking the roof runoff and recharging it in the back of the building. And right now, as we speak, I gotta quit looking at the neighbor because there's a delay. So in the back of the building now, so the existing building is the red, in the back, there's currently a recharge system there now. So all the roof drains, if you walk back there, you'd see all the roof drains, because the building pitches to the back, it's, and the roof drains, um, capture it, and we infiltrate it in the back there. Or we infiltrate a certain fraction of it, not all of it. Um, the same system will be used here, we'll be taking that out, and we'll be moving it to the side, and increasing the size of it. And now that will take both of these buildings, and it will handle, um, the runoff again. Doesn't have to take a hundred-year storm, but it has to take a certain volume in order to meet the criteria. Again, the same design as the previous one. What happens other than that, the parking, again, which we're not changing, we're just to give you a, you know, tell you what's going on, is this doesn't all drain out to Route 1, there's a catch basin down in this area here, and there's pumps. Um, and what it does is the catch basin captures it, goes into the pump chambers, and it pumps it in the back here, where there's a drainage basin in the woods. We didn't cut all the trees down to create your basic basin, what we just did, back when we built this building, is we created, just created a berm back there, because everything pitches in that direction. So by putting the berm, we kinda created a natural, like a dam, like you would build a reservoir. So that, again, it doesn't change this, but that's, that's how the drainage goes. The site is currently served by a septic system located in the front yard, in this area here. And a lot of the details of this are on our site plan, so I can, if we have questions after I'm done, I can just open up the site plan and show you. Um, that system was designed to handle about 1,250 gallons per day. Over the last however many years, it's been getting about 55 gallons a day. So more than enough capacity, we'll be talking to the Board of Health about that as well. They said they couldn't find the thing, but I, I know where it is, it's under 129.
Yeah.
Right, I'm sure that's where it is. Again, this, we're talking about the special permit criteria, there's a lot of special permit criteria we have to meet, which I put in my, um, memo, and I'm not gonna reread it to everybody. You can take a look at it there. But I did discuss, um, there's no change in traffic, there's no change in curb cuts, so that is not an issue. The, um, storm drain I discussed briefly, talks about general purpose and harmony with the intent of the bylaws. This is in the Highway Business District, it's right on the edge of the S1. But if you, but it abuts the S1 district, so I kinda use those criteria. Promote economic development, increase real estate check revenue, which, these are the criteria I'm reading now, out of the zoning. Maintain good planning and site review principles, track better land use, discourage strip or ribbon development, ensure environmental protection. So it's my opinion, this does have a positive impact. It will increase the revenue. It doesn't generate any requirement for additional town services. Socially, the use is a little, not a little different, it is no different from the existing use, from the outside, which I'll show you in a moment, or is measured by its impact to the town residents. Financial viability, of course, they wouldn't be doing it if they didn't think it was viable. So I don't think it will have an impact on traffic, on storage, on stormwater. And I think it'll, it meets, it meets the criteria of meeting the, the genre of what is going on up in Route 1 in that particular area. Let me show you, um, I just wanna, this came in later, so it isn't in your plan set. But let me, um, I wanna show you what the building is going to look like, very similar to what it is.
They don't currently do any stadium parking there, do they?
No, they don't.
I didn't think so, yeah.
And the signs don't very much say.
Yeah.
Ugh, hate this.
These signs never want to park, you never want to...
Yeah.
I see the lemon.
I don't know why.
This is a new drawing from the architect?
Yeah, this is the architect drawing, but it's just, doesn't wanna talk to me. It's crazy.
What Bill is doing, that we received two comments from departments. One of them was from the, I believe, from the Fire Department, they had no, no comments, no problems. And the other comment was from the Board of Health, that they couldn't locate the, uh, the septic design, but as Bill said, we think it's because it was originally filed as 129 Washington Street, which is what the Chase Lumber is, and this application is under 127. I think there was just a mix-up in the addresses. But that's, that's all the commentary we've received.
Yeah, so let me, uh, it's coming up here. So here is the, um, the building elevation. So the, the, um, kinda the gray out area is what's there now. And you can see the red, which matches the color of it is now, it's not exactly this color, it just comes out different on the PDF. So that's that. Let me, and you can see how it's pitched to the rear, this is looking from the south side. So if you were standing at Chase Lumber, looking toward the building, this would be, this is the south side. So that's that. Let me stop sharing this for a moment and show you another drawing. Again, this is from the architect. You can see that, again, it's gray, it shows the front building is gray, but it's really not gray. So that's, that's kinda the look, you really won't see much of it. If you look at it from this side, if you were coming from the south, there's actually a line of pines. Sharon Watson, one of those. There's a line of pines, they gotta be, they gotta be 25 feet high now. And then there's, um, I think it's Arba Vady is along the front. So this doesn't show that, but that landscaping is currently there.
Bill, is the jog that you mentioned, the, the movement where, in this photo,
Yeah.
that he moved it so it lines up?
Yes.
Okay.
See that right there, see how he pushed it over, this is the back corner?
Yeah, now it's gonna...
Slips at that side. So that's, that was the look. And then, and again, it was for a utility reason, and I didn't find out about it until long after I had filed. So that concludes my presentation, if there's any questions?
Bill, I think I asked this when you came in, just to discuss informally, and I forget, uh, what the answer was. So is, given that there is parking for, uh, CrossFit in the existing parking of the, uh, Chase lot, is, is that separated, or is it just kinda like all one thing, and people can kinda find their own way?
It's, it's all one thing, um, but really, nobody uses that. There's 23 parking spaces around the CrossFit building, and, and that's more than adequate for the activities that she does. So, but because it's one lot, we just lump all the parking together.
Okay.
And frankly, I just, my own personal experience of doing business with the Chase family up there, the front lot right in front of their showroom is hardly ever full. Most of the, most of the people who are doing business there have an order that's in, they drive around the building to the other side, they pick it up, wood or, you know, materials, whatever it might be. And then, you know, they sign for the slip inside, and they leave. So, I mean, I don't think I've ever seen that lot, right in front of the showroom, full. I mean, there's definitely cars there, especially people who go in with like, a designer for kitchen, or, you know, tile, or something like that, or hardware, uh, that they're gonna buy for, for cabinetry and things like that. So, I mean, I, and I look at this also and just say, how long has his, has his daughter owned this, this CrossFit?
Ten years.
Ten years, so I mean, obviously, she's had a positive track record, there've been no issues, and now she wants to expand her business, I, I look at that as a positive. And I think that, you know, the plan addresses whatever it needs to, including potential future parking, which we've done in town and other locations, some of which have never needed to be built, but the, but the land is always still there for them. I don't, I mean, personally, I don't see many issues with this at all.
I don't, I agree with you, Kevin.
No, Brandon.
You need a motion? Why do you have to close the public hearing?
Any, any further questions before we close the public hearing?
Uh, no, I assume that, uh, the plans themselves will have to be, uh, redone to...
Yes, I'll, I'll change the site plan that you have in order to shift the building over to the left before we bring it in for signature.
Yeah, we'll, we'll add that as a condition.
So then, do we hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Move, go move.
For a second? For those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve, submitted. The condition that the county's gonna...
And with standard conditions for site plans.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So it would be sometime past 7:25 PM, we have public hearing for subdivision rules and regulations. That's it, right?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, how are you?
Hey.
Just wanna tell you, you got with page 18 where there should've been a period after section 40, there should be a comma there.
Do you want me to hit him?
Take those tickets away from me for that game.
So like I said earlier in the meeting, this is something that's been in the works for quite a long time. Phil and I started, Bill Buckley and I started the, uh, the project before the pandemic, and then it got halted, and and then Lance joined, um, and, uh, he's done quite a bit of work on it, too. So the, uh, the planning board is the, uh, um, the board that adopts these regulations. It doesn't need to go to town meeting because it's not a zoning matter. Currently, the subdivision rules and regs are not part of the, of the code of the town. They're waiting for us to finish this provision, uh, before adding it to the code, but, um, after this, this is approved, and, you know, will be part of the, the code of the town as well.
It seemed, for the most part, it was just updating and household.
Yeah.
Clean up.
Yeah, a lot of that.
Anything, what, what would you consider the more substantial of the changes?
Any comments? I, I think like, one of the, the big, the bigger things that, that were done was about stormwater, because of our stormwater regulations, we needed to be, you know, on par with what has been adopted in the past. You know, that, that has been modernized. We had to do some additional things, like adding the, uh, the, the central mailbox, which is now something that the, the post office is requiring.
Who his? Who his?
Yes, who his. And, uh, and, and one of the things that we wanted to discuss with, with you is the, um, I'm sorry, I'm looking for it right now, is the requirement to, um, to do a homeowners association for the maintenance, some, some of the items in the subdivision. I was, I was talking with Jeff prior to the meeting. I'm sorry, this is in page 14. Section 404.
404 is 15, or 403?
Where are we going?
I thought it was 15, actually.
I'm sorry, okay, so 404?
Right, yeah.
On page?
15.
So one, one of the, the things that, that, you know, that we, I was talking with Jeff about is, is that there are things that right now have fallen through the cracks. Uh, one of them is the subdivisions, like, um, on Sullivan Way off of Chesna Street, there's a long strip of road before getting to the first houses. There, we, we never contemplated who would maintain that area. And, you know, for the most part, the, the, the town, the, the Highway Department cannot be doing them all the time, so they get done, I'm not sure...
Is that an accepted way, or is it a private way?
It's, it's an accepted way.
We have the same, we have the same issue with the end of Van Dorn and Weston. And I will tell you that, uh, the builder of that area, I, I agree that there needs to be a homeowners association language, but I think we might wanna tighten it a bit to, because if I showed you the homeowners association agreement that we have, it's a joke. And it's not binding. So if it's, it checks the box, but it doesn't really accomplish and give weight to what the...
So is this gonna create a situation that every subdivision's gonna have to have a homeowners association?
Well, that's, that's what we're discussing, because, uh, one other thing that right now is facing is that, that, that boo his mailbox, that right now, we have two subdivisions that were required to do that, but this was, the requirement was after we have granted those, those permits. And so right now, there is nowhere that says who will maintain those. And the town cannot take responsibility for maintaining them, but right now, the, the neighborhood doesn't have any, you know, any requirement to, to maintain them. So that's another thing that we really need to...
Wouldn't that fall under like a mailbox, though? Like, if my mailbox gets whacked over by the town, it's on, or my neighbor hits it, it's on me, so why wouldn't, uh...
But if it's, if it's a disrepair, if it goes like, you know, 10 years from now, if it's, if it's in a bad shape, who's going to replace it?
Let's say underneath like some kind of a, a pergola or something like that, and the, the moisture gets to it, and, and all the boxes start to get painted and whatever.
Right, because, because the developer was the one that installed them.
Right, is there a way, it, um, I, I do think there needs to be language, but is there a way that we could, um, have an example or a template that has to be utilized, that, so we are ensuring that it's legally binding, and that it also covers the shared mailboxes, the basins, or whatever that we need to...
Yeah, and that's something that we talked about, consulting with, with Town Council about it, we were not able to, um, connect with him. But that is something, you know, we have in the, in the appendices, we have the forms, you know, for the, for, uh, applications, for the performance guarantee, uh, for, you know, truparitad agreement, so... for, you know, truparite agreement. So I think that that's something that we could include as part of, you know, the appendices is a sample of, you know, what a homeowners association document would look like.
Because if I showed you the one I have?
I've seen it, I've seen it, yes.
And getting back to the water thing, so I know that when John was on the board, he paid a lot of attention to the new federal and state regulations that were coming down the pike. Are these, this, this document's gonna address more of that the way, way it might have been? Or it supersedes what we have been doing in order to make that more correct?
You mean for the stormwater?
Yeah.
Yeah, this has to do with, you know, MS4, so.
Yeah, I mean-
Yeah, which is what John was talking about at the time, yeah.
Yeah, I think a lot of the stuff got added even before, I think a large part of the stormwater section may have been added before I even stepped into this, but I don't think, I mean, it circles back to the, you know, you did, the stormwater regulations were approved like two years ago.
Right.
And, you know, this also loops into that, you know. You know, so they had certain standards that need to be upheld. Bill, do you have any insight? And that was?
No, we already worked this all out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have any, any other comments or questions? Bill, do you want to add anything?
The only thing I would add is I went back to the homeowners association. You know, every project is different. So this gives you the authority, says the HOA document shall be submitted to and approved by the planning office. Every project is different, you know, like you know, Link, Othlet and Peterson have that low impact development in the middle there. Basically, the little islands. Who's gonna take care of those? Nobody. But that has, they have a homeowners association. Other subdivisions may not have that. So that's, you see what I mean?
Like Lawton, are they gonna, will they fall under this?
They're gonna have to do, they're gonna have to do a homeowners association here because they have the mailboxes. And they also are gonna have the islands in the middle. But some subdivisions won't. So that's why I mean, you have the authority to do it. You can look at it, send it to town council, bill the-
I would like to have like at least a template to work off of that has understanding we would, it could be tweaked, but like at least a foundation for a developer to work off of. Because we had so much trouble in Governor's Meadow.
Well, the, for, for for the duplex that we did on Main Street, Joe Lynch did that. Part of the conditions was that they had to do, the content documents had to be approved by the planning office, by town council, basically. And I think that, you know, maybe that's something, so that it's something that is, gets reviewed. So even if we don't have a template, it gets reviewed by town council. And that's a requirement. It's not, you know, it's not something that, you know, Joe Schmoke and just write and say, this is your homeowners association. It actually has to be a legal document that has to be approved by, by our attorney.
So in a situation like, like that on Main Street or Community Way, that are affordable housing, does that negate or change anything that's in these regulations, or no?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Can you just clarify one thing? Because, Bill, you were just talking about, I know you're using it, Lawton as an example. But are we suggesting that, and that's an approved subdivision, I know we haven't signed off on everything yet, but are you suggesting that we, in certain cases, would be retroactively applying?
No, no.
They may do it themselves at some point. I mean, there's gonna come a need in the near future, you know, for some of these people-
No, I understand. In fact, I remember like, some time ago, I mean, probably a decade ago, but long, long decades after Dudley Hill was constructed, the homeowners got together to reconstruct their little, you know, signage entryways at both ends. So, I mean, sometimes people have the wherewithal to do that.
That's what we did in Governor's Meadow.
Not so much.
And I need to point out that the language is, the board may require the creation. It's not like it's, you know, that you're going to do it for every, every instance. But, you know, we, we want to open it so that it is, if it's necessary, then we will, you know, exercise that. Because it might be a small subdivision that, you know, will not have the the central mailbox, will not have, you know, a lot of, you know, the low density stuff, so they might not need it.
I know. I think it's a good idea.
What do you do in the case where the homeowners refuse to form an association?
I think the developer would have to put that in the closing documents.
It's a demystification.
It does not make them form. It tells them they have to. It does not force them to form.
But here-
Washburn is a prime example.
But there's an incentive to form something, because like, if we hadn't formed it in Governor's Meadow, the, I mean, we haven't done the entrances yet, but like, all of the common land would be like a friggin' forest. It would be, it would look like crap. So there's an incentive for the homeowners to come together in some way, whether it's a legal homeowners association, or it's just ours, which is a little flimsy one, but we have a bank account and-
Washburn has nothing.
Where's Washburn?
Four houses, five houses, they refuse to form one.
Where's Washburn?
Up off of 106.
Does it look like crap?
Yeah, it's starting to get over. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Now, the reason they do it is because there's a retention basin there.
We have two. We have two in Governor's Meadow.
It's exceptionally deep. It's very steep on the sides, the bank in, it's very deep, and they don't want the liability.
Well, they don't have any insurance. Then they can't afford insurance.
That's why they refuse to form it. And that was a big to do there a number of years ago.
I do think retention basins need to be maintained by the town. That's my own personal feeling, because A, people don't know what needs to be done unless you're, you're involved in the development of them and stuff. Actually, I have to clean out the basin, and I know they're not doing it as they should be. I'm not gonna complain.
Are there, you know, are there situations now where they're just not getting that, you know, the Tree and Park Division can't get to those, or whatever?
We, we don't have the staff to-
That's what I thought.
Clean them all effectively. You know, it's, especially Tree and Park these days, they just demand, you know, the unregulate, you know, the unfunded mandates just continue to increase. And, you know, they have cleaning dams and water basins, and not to mention just all the aesthetic sort of, you know, common maintenance and the fields and all that stuff. So, demand continues to increase and-
I bet Bob Bodie would take this on.
Is it possible to have Tree and Park be responsible for it? And in the deed, that they would be billed by the town as necessary?
You mean that homeowners would be billed?
Homeowners.
I'm not sure how that would legally work. I mean, it doesn't increase our availability, you know, whether or not they pay us back. It doesn't increase-
No, but it's compensation, which then internally is possibly staffing, so.
I'm not sure how that would work legally in terms of, you know, us directly charging, you know, a group of homeowners that way. It's not, not a situation that I'd encounter. Yeah, I mean-
You're charging a homeowner for property tax, so you're doing that for maintenance.
But here's, and here's the thing, I mean, if there's, like, we kick in, each household kicks in X number of dollars per year. And then if that was legal to do, I don't know if it is, then like, I pay our our lawn person, like our common area who takes care of it, I write a check. It'd be just, so here's the thing, you know, is it, the legality, is it something for the town to do? Or do they do what we did and just go hire somebody, like a landscaping company, to take care of it?
My two cents on that would be, if I'm not mistaken, those are all on private land. Therefore, they're not the responsibility of the town to take care of.
But it's, no.
The town have the right to-
Okay, so if you go down Van Dorn, when you first, no, Weston, on the left, there's a basin?
Yes.
That's nobody's property. I've looked at the plots.
It's gotta be Steve's property.
It's gotta be, yeah, somebody has to own it.
I can jump in on that.
Okay, please.
Where we're required to, as part of the subdivision documents, it's called a conveyance of easements and utilities. So even though, there's two on, what's the one behind Eric, Weston? So there's one at the beginning, and there's one at the end.
Behind the property.
Behind somebody's house. And then down near where you live, there's one over on the left side.
Yes.
Down past your house and behind the house, there's another big one there. They're on private property, but, but the developer was required to sign an easement over to the town that allows the town to access and maintain it. So for every project, it's called a conveyance of easements and utilities.
So if that's done, why isn't the town maintaining it?
He just don't have the staff.
Okay, well then, we've got to fix some part of this process. We either got to figure out how to staff it, or stop giving them conveyance.
Well, the alternative is what Lance just brought up is, which irritates me, because I just got my tax bill. But, you know, the is that you put it into a homeowners association, and then they're responsible to maintain it. For the most part, the maintenance isn't hard. It's just, it's just not a big deal.
Our houses, we have 26 houses, 24 houses. We put, I think everyone puts like 250, 300, and we've done it for a while. We've got like a bank account with like almost 20 grand in it.
Yeah. I would be surprised if it cost you $1,000 a year.
I would agree.
To do that, to do what we're talking about now, you know.
Because it's really just a landscaper could clean that.
It's a landscaper. And then once in a while, you have to replace, like for the tree box filters, you gotta replace the mulch and stuff, or if a tree dies.
Here's the thing, though, the one, like, you know that, and we know that.
The landscapers might know.
But the landscapers might not, it would be good to say, to provide them, like, here's the expectations.
There is one.
Yes, operations.
Everyone that you, every plan that you approve has an operations and maintenance plan for construction, for construction and for long-term operations. So you approve one.
Right. And put it in a file here. It's not, it's not the homeowners association. So, you know, I'm not, I'm not making an excuse for it, but it's gotta be in the right place so that they can hire the contractor so that he or she knows exactly what to do.
Tracy's talking about that as a good idea, is that part, I'll tell you what some towns do now, is they make us record at the registry, the operation and maintenance plan. I don't know what that proves, but it's recorded. But maybe if it was a homeowners association-
But unless Kevin Guarini goes to the state registry, he's not gonna know.
But I would say that if there's a legal entity of a homeowners association, the doc, that doc, they could, we could require that that document gets, gets shared, presented to the homeowners association, and then it's the homeowners association's responsibility to give it to Guarini.
Yeah, right. And that's, that's what you can do, is you can take the operation and maintenance plan that you've approved, that the consultant or Lance has approved.
Give you some time, Mike.
Yes. And and then you can be making part of your homeowners association. And it's a living document too, because
Things change.
Rules, things change, right.
Now, if the basin fails.
Whose fault? Who do they go after?
Whose fault is it? Who has to rush down there and correct it?
It would be the homeowners association would have to do it, because what typically will happen is, as you just pointed out, is these things just don't get maintained. So they clog. If it's an infiltration basin, which almost all of them are, they'll clog. And so you need to go in there. What you can do is you can disc it up. You can disc it up, and you can put in a sandfill mixture on the bottom and run it.
A homeowner, general homeowner would know that. So like, and I don't know if somebody like Guarini would know that.
They would, but they would pick up the phone and call an engineer, or call the town, and they would discuss it with them. You know who I talk to and stuff like that? The guy who runs the Foxborough Country Club. Brilliant. You know, he knows all of that. I mean, think about it. Oh, it keeps so green, looking so good, while they drain so well. So he's, so there are people out there, you're right, Joe homeowner wouldn't, but that's not his job. The information's out there, you can get it. That makes it irritate me that you pay all this money in taxes, and you still have to pay something additional. But I understand the issue. The alternative is to hire more people, add more cost and more overhead, so.
I think you should tell Stan he got some money.
That was a good discussion, Gabby.
Well, thank you.
Are we supposed to do anything?
Yeah.
Yes, I need, we need, we need a vote to adopt the revised subdivision rules and regulations. Just, just for clarification, we only worked on the narrative part. There's still the appendices, there's, you know, figures, illustrations of different things that we need to revise, you know, modernize, because a lot of them are hand drawn. So this is something that, that's our next step.
Okay.
But this is, so I would appreciate if you could vote to approve the revised.
After we close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Aye. I make a motion to adopt the modernized and updated subdivision-
Subdivision, hold on. Rules and regulations.
Rules and regulations.
For the town of Foxborough.
For the town of Foxborough, knowing that you're gonna also be updating the appendices. In the future, yes.
Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Your work, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Make a motion to adjourn.
I don't think, I don't think we should update them.
And you have the, those will require a separate vote? Those will require a separate vote?
I think so, yeah, they will, yes.
The motion to adjourn is-
Nope.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Tom.
With cross-sections.
Thank you.
Thank you.